2017. Adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on December 7, 2016, in New Jersey Store Ledger, the official newspaper for the township of Springfield, and posted in the Annex Building on December 30, 2016. Can you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, oh, can I get the approval of the minutes for May 2017?
Mr. Terry making a motion to approve of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skipping a part. Roll call. Sorry about that, Jen.
That's okay. Mayor Diane Stamboulis?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Maria Vesalo is absent. Mr. Jeff Tiger?
Here.
Ms. Victoria Saracino?
Here.
Dr. Kristen Labazo?
Here.
Mr. Michael Gonzalez is absent. Vice Chair Paul Schneider?
Here.
And Chairman Jerry Fernandez?
Here.
Sir, we have a forum.
Okay. Now, we can go. Let's do the resolution, I'm sorry, the approval of the minutes, May 2017. Motion?
Okay, now I'll make an approval. Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 2017.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstentions. All right, resolutions, the 2017 master plan, reexamination and update, their motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017 master plan examination and update resolution.
I will second that also.
Okay, we need a roll call on that.
Mr. Jeff Tiger?
Absolutely.
Mayor Stamboulis?
Yes.
Ms. Saracino?
Yes.
Dr. Labazo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed, sir.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to the applications, and our first one's a quick one with the capital improvement hearing for the Springfield Community Pool. Thank God. Go ahead. The floor is yours, my friend.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me just swear here, man. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I absolutely do. Yes, sir.
Can you give your first and last name for the record?
First name is Robert. Last name is Barringer. B-A-R-R-A-N-G-E-R. Would you like me to state my qualifications?
Yes. Yes, please.
All righty. Terrific. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with Cornerstone Architectural Group, a firm that I helped found back in 1987. I've been practicing in the profession for 30 years. I'm also a professional planner and a registered interior designer. I have been before this board numerous times.
Okay.
All right. So, I'd like to talk to you this evening a little bit about the community pool project, and I suspect, and I hope, that you folks have drawing sets in front of you, or perhaps electronic files of the documents that were submitted. There were a total of eight pages. The first page was a property survey, followed by several pages of civil engineering drawings, and then two architectural drawings, both the floor plan and what we call the architectural elevations, which was the last page. So, those should be the documents that hopefully you have in front of you. The project, as probably most of you know, is located on Morrison Road, which is kind of nestled in the northern edge of the township between Morris Ave. and Route 78. As a frame of reference for where the project is located. The original building, which most of you probably know very well, was built in 1963, so it's a, it's an oldie but a goodie. We feel that it's got very good bones architecturally, and it makes a good candidate for the, for the work that we're proposing to do. As you probably know, it's also a seasonal building in that it, it doesn't really function year-round. It doesn't have heat. It doesn't have air conditioning. It relies on natural ventilation. So, it's a true seasonal building, which obviously most pool, community pool-type buildings are. It's one-story, and also doesn't have a basement. So, that sort of gives you a frame of reference for what that existing building is. The design goals, which were established by the team, were to basically expand the size of the facility, renovate and modernize it, and to incorporate some new spaces, which included a multipurpose room.
Mr. Barringer, before you continue?
Yes, sir.
What exactly are you here for tonight? Procedurally?
Just to be clear, this is a courtesy review of a capital municipal improvement. So, the board has authority to do only is to listen to the project, to make any recommendations, which are non-binding, and then to return their recommendations to the governing body.
Okay.
I apologize if I should have perhaps summarized that first.
No, no. I just wanted everybody to understand what you were seeking and the purpose of the testimony.
Fair enough.
I liked hearing.
Okay. Terrific. So, back to the design goals. We're looking to expand the facility, to renovate and modernize it, and to basically include some new spaces, which included a multipurpose room and also a fitness center. And we worked very closely with the Township Committee Subcommittee that was established that includes representatives from the township to basically help us move through the design process. So, the design concept for the, for the building very quickly was very simple in the sense that we're looking to create like a beach club look and feel to the, to the new, to the new building, and I have some color renderings that I'd like to show you that basically express that. So, before I get into the pretty pictures and the, and the color, I'd like to just briefly just make you aware of the size of the building. The existing building is 4,500 square feet, so it's rather small. The new increased area, including the roofed overhangs, takes the building up over 8,000 square feet. So, we're achieving that through three additions to the, to the back and the side of the building, and we also have a covered drop-off area at the entrance for folks that are coming to the building. There's a covered picnic area, and there's also a third covered area in the back of the building. So, like I said, that total brings us up over 8,000 square feet. Height of the building, which is shown on our drawing, A200, is almost 29 feet. It's 28 feet 6 inches, according to our calculations. So, that's the, the building height. Can you repeat that? What was it? 28 feet 6 inches.
Versus what's currently?
Currently there? That's a good question. At the high port, I believe it's about 15 feet. So, effectively, we're, we're doubling the size of it. The existing building right now has a flat roof.
Yes.
And we're proposing to remove that and create a pitched roof, which we think will give it a whole lot of architectural character. So, that's why the increase in the height. It's a good question. Thank you. And I'd like to refer to a couple of, I guess, exhibits that I brought with me, so...
That's fine. You might as well mark them in.
Okay.
A1, start with the date.
Okay. Fair enough. Is there a microphone I can use to stand up, or?
Yep. We'll get that for you.
Terrific.
So, the building's not being knocked down, then?
No, sir.
Because I know that there were two options back when I was on the committee that was being discussed, one tearing it down and one keeping. So, what are you keeping? You're just keeping the bare minimum that you have to keep, or is it going to be?
Great question. So, essentially, what we are keeping are the existing masonry walls, which are basically enclosure walls of, of the facility, right? So, everything inside the building will essentially be gutted and removed, as will what exists as the roof framing now. So, essentially, like I said, we're sort of taking the building back to its bones, right? And, and basically coming back from there.
All right. So... Are you guys doing the water pump too?
Yes? Didn't sound like it. So, just to quickly walk you through the floor plan, the existing building sort of has this sort of bat wing shape to it, which is indicated in the gray shading here. This is the parking lot here. We're proposing to leave the existing building, as I mentioned, build this new covered front entry here, new addition out the back, which is essentially the fitness center and some support spaces, and an addition out the back here. That's addition number two, which will become the new kitchen and the new concession area, and then a third addition off the side, which is an office and some restrooms. So, that's essentially the, the facility. You come through the center of the building, you access it much in the same way that you previously do. The locker rooms, which used to be on this side, have now been relocated to this side. This now becomes the multipurpose room, which can potentially be a 12-month-a-year space. We intend to air-condition and heat this space. Based on feedback from the Subcommittee, they feel as if that this space could be utilized during the year for potentially activities and rentals. So, the multipurpose room is, is over on that side, and as I said, it's subdividable, too. So, that gives you a brief idea of what the building looks like and planned.
Well, there's, I'll get into that. They could, they could rent it out. You could rent out some of that space, if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct. That was the intent, so...
And then the other part, if I'm not mistaken, is also because the campers, right now, when there's a storm or something, get run over to the chism building. We wanted this to be big enough where they can, they can all go in there and stay and not have to be bused to a different location.
That's correct. So, the multipurpose room can double as that sort of space in terms of storms, and we've done a calculation that we can get well over 200 kids in there, closer to 300 kids, if we needed to in a pinch. So, and there's also other areas in the building where we could effectively house someone in, in the event of a storm, so... Totally. Thank you for clarifying that. So, this is a, a rendering prepared by an artist, which basically shows the, the new front entrance. So, this is the front of the building. This is the existing parking lot, and obviously what you're going to see immediately is the fact that we've eliminated that pitch, or that flat roof and created this pitched roof. The building's rather symmetrical, which is nice, so we have this central element, which is basically where you would come to the facility. You actually walk through it to gain access to the pool. The multipurpose room would be on this side with separate entrances from the exterior, so you could basically open up that building and use it without having to access the main building, which is a nice feature. And then the locker rooms and those support facilities are over here on the, on the left.
Can you just mark that as A1 with today's date?
Absolutely.
Is there a sticker? Do we have, or on the back?
I can do it on the back.
Most important, where's the concession stands?
Concession stands are on the back, closer to the pool, right?
With no liquor license.
The ice cream is the most important part.
When you're there with three or four kids, a beer would be not here.
Shall I mark this one A2, then?
No, that's part of the plan submitted, right?
It is, yes. And this is just, this is just another view of the, of the new front. Showing more from the, from the meeting room side again. But what you can see, obviously, is this nice covered entry coming out to basically allow folks to be dropped off undercover. You can walk to the building. In terms of the materials, we're looking to do siding in two different types and two different colors. Architecturally, all new windows, obviously all new doors, obviously, obviously...
Those are solar panels, or they're just windows?
So, this element right here is actually a skylight, and that is, that is a bid alternate to the project. So, it's not part of the base bid for the building. We're taking a separate cost for that, and if we find that the, that part of the, or that element is basically affordable when we get the bids back, that may become part of the project. So, this is, I guess, what you consider to be like an artist conception of the, of the entire project.
All right. I mean, everybody here should have looked at the plans, or, I don't know, have any questions?
I have a question. Who collaborated on the evolution or development of the plans from the town's perspective?
Fair question. So, as was indicated previously, this project actually goes back a couple of years?
Yeah, let me give you a little bit of history on that one, if you don't mind, just because I've kind of been pushing this for about six or seven years, I think, being that the building was as old as it was. The pool is a separate utility, which covers its own expenses, and has made, thank God, a profit over the last few years of over $100,000 each year. So, this is bonded separately. The pool will pay for the bond. Correct me if I'm, if anything's changed. We had spent, over the course of four or five years, over $1 million already in repairs. And just like an old car, there's only so much money you can put into an old car before you eventually have to look at buying another car. So, this building and the pool, we've put a lot of money in over the last four or five years. This is one part of the project. There's another part about putting a spray park maybe for the kids, like a little water spray park area. As you know, that facility has a lot of space that, in my opinion, seems to be underutilized. But this is part of the project that goes back. I know there was a Subcommittee, I know the mayor can fill you in on what's, on this year. Part of this project was bonded last year, was voted on and approved for a bond last year, and again this year for the remaining balance on what they projected to be. There was a Subcommittee that was done from the committee, worked with, I'm sure they worked with Sam and, and our, our officials, our engineers, along with gentlemen here, and the project moved forward, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and I'll add to that. The Subcommittee was with Deputy Mayor Maria Vesalo and Committee Woman Erica DeVois, formed the Subcommittee, and have met with the experts in designing the new building.
Now, something that had been discussed in the past, and I'm not sure if it could be done now or in the future, but even, we're looking at, at one time about even putting like solar panels in the parking lot, where you could park your car underneath and maybe use, and it didn't go through for various reasons, one being that the pool was only used in the summer and we wouldn't get enough power from it. But maybe with that being open year-round now, I don't know if that's something in the future that could be considered, just throwing it out there because I don't get in front of the mic as much as I used to.
So, that, that was discussed, the whole notion of, of green and sustainable design, and especially solar panels. So, one of the things that we have done is we've actually put additional design load into the roof. The solar panels aren't part of the project right now, but there's the ability to add them in the future, right, from a, from a structural standpoint. From an electrical infrastructure standpoint, we, we elected not to basically create that infrastructure now as a cost savings measure, but my point being is, it was discussed heavily. It was debated, and ultimately, like I said, we made provisions for those panels. They're just not going to be part of the project now.
Like I said, the ones we even looked at were in the parking lot there, and I guess just couldn't do it for various reasons, but I, I think it looks great. I don't, any other questions?
No.
No anywhere down here? No?
Actually, I have a quick question. Could you elaborate a little bit on the hay bale barrier and the, the tree protection details?
I could, but that's not my area of expertise. Mike Disco from, Mike Disco Associates is here this evening. He's the civil engineer that actually prepared that drawing.
Okay.
So, I'd like to defer that question to him, if that's okay?
Sure. I was just asking if, just to elaborate a little bit on, on those elements, the hay, hay bale barriers and the tree protection?
That's just a in-construction device that is required for soil erosion purposes, so that soil erosion doesn't go to the tree root and also, it's a barrier around it that construction vehicles don't pick.
Okay, so that's just during construction?
Just during.
Okay.
Open it up to the public at this point. Anybody in the public have a question? You didn't all come for the, yes, Mr., yep. Name an address, please.
Sam Mardini, 100 Mountain Avenue, Springfield. I, I just want to say, the Subcommittee that worked on this project worked very hard. We, we all met every Thursday late at 3:45, and I really appreciate everyone who, you know, put in the time and decided to come in late. Mr. Barringer and, and his staff did an enormous job to trying to accommodate what we want to do with the budget we have, and I really commend you and your staff for the work. Of course, Mr. Disco also worked very hard, and I, you know, the committee's, Mrs. Vesalo and, and Erica's input was, was very instrumental. So, I just want to thank everybody. We came up with a very difficult schedule, and everybody thought it cannot happen because it was very tight scheduled, but so far, we're right on target, and we have a bid opening, I believe, August?
First week in August.
Second.
So, this should be starting, once the pools close this season, they'll start working on it.
We are, that's the way we are setting this up, so we can start immediately when the pool closes, and hopefully, we will have an opening at the start of the season next year.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you for your work, and as well on this, and we know, you know, there's not many ways that the town, the town doesn't have many options in generating revenue. This pool utility actually does pretty well. When you compare towns around us and what's available to other towns, some of the other communities are on waiting lists to get in their pools. And, you know, if we continue to make this happen, there was a cost, a cost analysis done by someone in the beginning of this year that was not party, nonpartisan person, came in, did a study on the revenue the pool makes, and if this could happen and affordability, and how it would affect the utility, and it, the numbers all made sense, in a nutshell. So, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we don't, do we need to vote on anything here? No, right? If anybody has any recommendations for the Township Committee?
We have to send a letter.
We have to send a letter?
We can vote on authorizing the chairman to sign a letter favorably referring it back to the Township governing body.
So, is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve, for the board to approve the chairman to endorse a letter saying that the board is in favor of this...
Keep up the good work.
...in favor of this capital improvement project with no conditions, no, no added conditions.
I will second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstentions, none? Okay. Next.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything over a long course of time.
Makes me want to go swimming.
It's going to be nice. Spray park for the kids, it's going to be nice.
That's what I want to see.
That's next, yeah. Okay. Now, we have the amendment to A2015-S, Walter's Row Golf Club. Please come on up.
Not for you, for the...
Thank you, Chairman Fernandez.
Your turn.
My name is Russ Finestine. I'm with the firm of Finestine &amp; Malloy, and I represent Walter's Row Golf Club. This is an application for amended final site plan approval. We originally obtained preliminary and final site...
Please, the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
It's up.
Is that better? We originally obtained preliminary and final site plan approval in January 2016. At that time, we requested a variance for lighting, which was granted. The lot is used for caddy parking only, and there's some now some concerns about safety and security because of darkness and so forth, that my client will detail during his testimony. I have Kevin Vitale, who's the general manager, chief operating officer here from Walter's Row, to testify, and I have Rusty Shomer, who's a professional engineer, to testify about the lighting plan. So, I will go right to testimony, if that's okay.
That's fine. That's fine. Alex, do you want to swear the amendment?
Do you want Mr. Vitale here, or?
Doesn't matter. That's fine.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you give your first and last name for the record, please?
Kevin Vitale.
If you want to qualify your witness.
Well, yeah, just, what is your position with Walter's Row?
The general manager and chief operating officer.
Okay. When we were here about 18 months ago, we requested a variance, so lighting was not required. Now, you would like to seek lighting. Can you explain to the board why you think lighting is necessary?
Right. So, we have, when sun is setting, about half a dozen caddies, or a dozen caddies that are coming off the golf course, and by the time they put the bags, take care of everything, it starts getting dark, and where their parking lot is, it's, it's darker than, than any other area, because it's still well wooded there. So, this is just a safety factor, a liability factor, that we'd just like to put some lighting up there, and the usage would be until the caddies left the parking lot, which I see no later than 9 o'clock at, at the latest.
And how will the lights be controlled?
They'll be controlled with two. One will be a timer, and also, when we do get electricity up there, the security will have cameras up there where they'll see that all the cars, cars are gone, they can have a switch and shut it off as well.
There was some question raised in some of the comments about the turn signal, the turn sign, I mean.
Turn signs up. It was something that I missed, and then when we were going through our information, I realized that, so we were able to put that up today.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Vitale.
Okay. Would you prefer to hear all the testimony, then ask questions, or do you want to ask? Anybody have questions? Let, let's hear it all, and then we'll...
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm going to call Rusty Shomer.
That's fine.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please give your first and last name for the record.
For the record, it's Richard Shomer, last name S. Disco, and then the R. Shomer, here in the board of town.
Mr. Shomer's appeared here as an expert many, many times, and I would ask that the board accept him as an expert.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Shomer, can you just review your lighting plans for the board?
Should I use this? Is this on, or?
Is that other mic, Sam, while you're there, is that other microphone on there? Because I just don't have it.
And is, is that the same as was submitted with the application?
What I have on the, I have the plans that were submitted with the application. This is an exhibit entitled Lighting Plan Exhibit dated July 12, 2017, prepared really to put some highlights to it for presentation to the board, but it basically has the same information.
Mark it as A1.
Okay, so this is an exhibit, hopefully you can see it from where you are, but just to orient you, Mountview Road is the gray paved area at the top of the page. There's an access driveway that comes into the, into the parking lot. We were here and got approval for the parking lot, we actually requested and were granted a variance relief not to have lighting. But as Mr. Vitale pointed out, really, it's a safety issue, and we, we find there's a need for parking, I mean, for lighting now. What we've, when we went to do the lighting design, we're very sensitive to how these lights were going to be oriented, where they would be situated, the height of the lights, and so forth. So, this actually is not what I would normally do as a lighting plan. Normally, you'd have a, a lot of pole-mounted lights throughout a parking area to distribute it very, very evenly, but here, one of the goals really was to have the lights oriented so that they were all facing away from Mountview Road. We're proposing four lights. If, if you recall, or you're aware, there is a retaining wall along this side of the parking lot closest to Mountview Road. That wall varies in height, in some parts, it's, it's pretty high, up to like 13 feet high. So, we're going to mount those, mount a couple of the lights to the wall, the, the ones furthest to the left, as we look at them here. Those would be mounted right on top of the wall, so there's, there's no poles there. And the other two lights, one would have a, a smaller pole, because it would be at the top of the wall, but the wall gives it some height, and the other one, the one furthest to the right here, that would be on a pole, because it's not on the wall. The lights are pretty consistent in height. The one on the left here is a 13-feet mounting height, 11 feet, and the other two are at 15-feet mounting height. As I said, normally, we would have a series of light poles all throughout a parking lot like this to really give it an even distribution, but what we did in this case is, was, as I say, we put them all on this side of the parking lot, and they all shine away from the road and into the parking lot. What that, what that gives us is, all of them are throwing the light in this direction, sort of down the page as we look at it, to provide some light throughout the parking area. So, the, the light fixtures, in fact, in fact, are tilted up to, again, shine that light away. The, the height of these lights, the, the tallest pole, as I say, is, is 15 feet, but even that is below the elevation of the road. All of these lights are below the elevation of, of Mountview Road. So, at the closest sort of, in terms of height, would be this light, and it's about, that, that light fixture will be about three or four feet below the road. The other lights will be even further. The one on, on the far left here is going to be about 12 feet or so below the road, and that's the fixture. It's going to be that far below the road. So, all of the, all of the light fixtures are below the level of the road surface, and certainly even further below anybody who'd be driving by or walking by. So, they're, and they all shine, as I say, away from the road, so you do not see the light source with any of these. You can't see the light source. You're looking at the back of the light, and that light is shining away and into the property. And that was done all purposely, again, because we wanted to be sensitive, to not have light fixtures that you could really see, and light sources that you could see, and I think we accomplished that with, with this design. The, if you, I'm sure board members have been past it, the, the parking lot itself is, is about 25 to 30 feet or so below the level of the road, and the, the retaining wall also helps, helps hide things. So, you really cannot see this unless you stopped in the road, looked over, and wanted to say, gee, can I see anything over there? That's the only way you could really maybe get a glimpse of anything, because of the light fixtures. That's the only way you could really maybe get a glimpse of anything because of the light fixtures or anything like that. So, that was kind of the purpose behind the design of it. I know there were, the board professionals had, did review letters. And Kevin, I think, addressed one of the comments in there about timing. We, I think, put on eleven o'clock on here, sort of, as, not sure, but as Mr. Vitale points out, that could be even a little earlier. And the other comment, I think, from Mr. Disco was about the average foot candles. That's really a function of the distribution. Instead of having lights all through this parking lot, this type of design really just leads to a little bit increase because some of the lights at the source, it's more. But we want to provide some light all the way across the parking lot. And in order to do that, led to this, the size, the heights, and the wattages that we proposed. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Is that a design waiver, Mr. Disco, the one-foot candle average?
It actually meets the ordinance.
Oh, meets, okay.
Any questions from the committee then? Am I right?
I have.
Go ahead. You first?
No, go ahead. I'm good.
Go ahead.
The only, I have two questions. One, your COO talked about that the lights would go off like around nine o'clock. Is there a way to program it so it's done by programming, like my house?
They would be on a timer.
It would be on a timer, it's like thirty minutes after dusk or something like that.
They would be on a timer, and then...
In addition to that?
It could be shut off if there's nobody there. That was, I think that's what Vitale...
Okay, just that it's on a timer, so if someone doesn't shut it off, it doesn't stay on?
Correct. Correct, yes.
That was, okay, I'm fine.
Go ahead.
Mr. Shomar, the, first of all, the parking lot has been used. Is it being used right now?
Yes.
Is it working out? Yes, okay. And we're gonna confirm and approve the lights subject to a nine o'clock turn-off time? Okay. Is there any potential impact on the neighbor to the west? You talked about the light shining away from Mountview Road, but there is...
And away, and away from the neighbor. Mr. Vitale's spoken with that neighbor.
We've been in discussion with the neighbor. He's fine with this. Again, it's work in progress. If there's an issue, we'll make that adjustment as well.
Okay, good. One of the reasons this got approved, there were a lot of people here when this application came up. It got approved because of the rustic nature and the fact that you weren't putting paving and car tire stops and lighting and so on. So, we're not gonna see you back here in a couple of months asking for paving and other improvements. Are we?
I hope this is the only mistake I made first time around, not having the sun lighting. It's really just a safety issue for the caddies for that. The only thing that hasn't been done yet is we're waiting for the electrical hookup, which is to be done at this point.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions?
Okay, my concern was the eleven o'clock time as well, but it seems to be addressed. I'm fine with that. I wasn't here the last time you were, but it seems, yeah, fine with me. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Any comments from the audience, from the public, please come on. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Kathy Flynn, eighty-eight Treetop Drive, Springfield. My backyard, basically, Boulter Stroll is basically in my backyard. I received the notice about the meeting, and I recall being here some time back when Boulter Stroll and/or the representatives were here, requesting approval for this new parking lot and, you know, along the top of Mountview. And at that time, as they said now, the parking lot was not going to have lighting. It was going to be used occasionally for the caddies to park when there was an overflow and they needed the lower area for parking. And occasionally, caddies would be parking up at the upper parking lot. They would be shuttled down by bus. This would happen in the morning as the caddies came in, and in the evening as the caddies came, you know, were going home. Representatives said at that time that they did not want to put lighting because they wanted to be good neighbors. Now, all of a sudden, it sort of seems like they don't want to be good neighbors. I'm opposed to the installation of the lighting in, you know, in or near that lot. I am happy to hear that the lighting is at a lower level. I work full-time, so I was not able to go to the engineering department to see the plans and everything. Our notices came very late, you know, like Thursday or so last week, to be able to try to check on the information. But I bought my house up there on, you know, on Treetop because of the peace and quiet and the serenity. And it just, it feels like a whole different world when you go up there after a long day at work. And I enjoy being able to go out, sit on my back deck occasionally, and enjoy looking at the moon, the stars, the sky. And I feel like when this lighting goes in, that, you know, this is gonna be a whole different thing. It's gonna detract from the value of my home, my neighbors' homes. And it negatively impacts the value of our home and the enjoyment of our property. I'm concerned about what impacts that this may have to the neighborhood, to the environment, light pollution, wildlife, because lighting does have an effect on all of these things. So, I just ask that you consider these concerns. And I know that perhaps further requests, further studies are done. I don't know what wildlife studies may have been done, how this might affect the wildlife, the bugs. Will the lights attract more bugs, more animals? Or will it tend to make those animals and bugs head off into the neighborhood? So, those are my concerns, and I do ask that you consider that, you know, before making your decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Hold on one second.
Two quick things. First, information regarding any detriment to home values requires testimony of a licensed appraiser or similar expert. And second, if you could just confirm, Mr. Shomar, that the zero-foot candles, right, towards...
There's no light spillage on adjacent properties. In fact, the lighting plan shows a point-by-point, and the lighting is within the parking area and really contained in this area. There's no light spillage onto adjacent properties, zero point zero, once you get outside of the immediate environments of the parking lot.
And this is conforming, or more conforming to what it was?
Yes, it's more conforming because we saw it and obtained a variance for no lighting because parking lots typically require lighting for safety reasons. Now, we're actually gonna be more conforming to the ordinance than we were initially. And I think Mr. Vitale said best it's really a safety issue, that's why lighting is done. But we tried to keep it to a minimum to provide the safety aspects at limited timing and location and direction and style of lighting was to minimize its appearance.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, please. State your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you can speak into the microphone, please.
Devindra Makkar, five sixty-eight Ashwood Road. Second, the speaker who was before me, she was before me. I agree with her. The lights cannot be put very high. It should be footlights only. And to further add to it, last time I was here, I had a question to these gentlemen. Why they cannot build something according to the town ordinance and building bylaws? Why they bring, they come to you without showing you, what is the hardship if they follow the township ordinance and building bylaws? They are. They have not shown anything. The straightway came like this. This was a big question mark.
Okay, hold on.
Big question mark on the integrity of the board. And prior boards also have shady integrity. There was a board which approved Sky Ridge.
Sir, we're gonna focus on this project right here, right now.
We are focusing on this project.
We're not going on anything else.
That thing must be quoted. Bruce Pitman, an attorney, who used to say that...
Sir, we're gonna focus on...
The dead body, on my dead body.
We're gonna focus on this project.
And you granted the development. Same way, I also added that club must have their own stormwater plan. They cannot keep flooding my property. They have been doing it for seventeen years.
Okay, sir. I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna tell you one more time. We're going to focus on this part right now, these lights, that parking lot. That's it.
Okay. Make it conditional. They must have their own stormwater plan. They put a new farm.
Unrelated to this, stormwater has nothing to do with the...
They left a crater in my property, which I filled it from my money.
Okay.
So, they must have a stormwater plan. They cannot keep flooding my property.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, we heard the public.
Anybody else?
Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir, please come on. And then, if you want to address anything, you want to address anything right now?
Well, just to say that the reason they're here before the planning board is because they're complying, and they had to get a variance to not put in lights before. So, they're becoming more compliant.
Yeah, Joe Alcon, forty-four Treetop.
I'm sorry, from where?
Forty-four Treetop, that's where they live. Could there be any consideration for just putting some privacy hedges along the roadway? So, it's a non-issue. I agree, the parking lot is below grade. We rarely see it. If you're walking by or running by, of course, you could see it. It's deep enough, but why can't you just put some privacy hedges, resolve the issue for the neighbors?
All right.
Near golf course, plenty of landscaping.
Okay.
I think it's pretty wooded back there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think. Isn't it wooded already back there?
We had addressed this.
It's pretty cleared out if you live there and you walk by, or you see it every day, or you drive every day. You can see the cars in the parking lot. It's below grade. You can easily see it.
Can you see it, like, seasonal, you mean, like, now?
I can see it today.
You can see it.
We're in season. Yeah, drive by on the way home. Put a row of bushes, resolves the issue.
Yeah, I got mics here too.
That, I think, he said this one was gonna be the closest one.
You know, I just have one question, and I'm not sure if you guys have this photo that we have. Can you see the photo we have?
Yes, yes.
So, basically, that's the proposed lighting structure?
No.
No, that's a camera.
That's in a, that's a security pole. The light poles, the one light pole near there is lower than that.
It's where the fencing is.
Yeah, but it's pretty wooded.
It looks wooded.
It is, yeah. I mean, we talked about this with the initial application. We're about seventy-five to a hundred feet back from the road. The elevation differences and the woods that we're retaining in that seventy-five to a hundred feet really act as a buffer in our, in our view.
And it was your direct testimony that all the cameras are below grade, below...
All of the light, all the lights are below the elevation of the road.
By a minimum of four feet.
At the closest, about three to four feet, and then otherwise, you know, ten to twelve feet or more below that. And that's the light fixture below the elevation of the roadway.
And none of it was spilled to the back on Mountview. Everything's pointed to the front.
Everything is pointed into the property. Nothing is pointing towards, in fact, the plans show the orientation of the direction of the lights into the, into the parking lot itself.
And that area has no pavement. I wasn't here on the board last time, but that's all dirt.
It's a gravel, it's a gravel surface.
This is all going in.
Right, coming in, the driveway coming in. Because of this, because of the slope, just to keep it stable, is paved.
All right, so, based on, I mean, from my opinion, my biggest concern is, you know, if it was gonna be on till eleven o'clock, that may be a little late in considering that by the summertime, I think by nine, you're done. So, if that's addressed, I mean, you know, I don't see much else. I mean, it's, you're complying with everything else. There's nothing, I mean, you're following the rules, so...
Mr. Shomar, is there an opportunity to do some enhanced landscaping above the wall and between the wall and the trees, the existing trees?
Could you plant shrubs in there? I suppose you could. It's heavily wooded, you know, and it's pretty shady. What would grow in there well would, you know, if you planted trees in there, yeah.
They'll all stay.
Yeah. If you put a row of evergreens, they wouldn't grow well in that area because it's, you're planting them in the woods.
And just so everybody has a complete picture, how many times, how often is this facility actually used seasonally?
Seasonally, it's a, it's a May-through-October operation. It will not be used November through April. If we have any caddies at all, they'll come back into the main lot, but it's used on a regular basis.
So, is it every day during those months?
And again, one of the other things we did too is we paved the road going from the parking lot inside to the other thing. So, during the day, we shuttle by carts, not by vans on that, so we did that as well. And that's internal.
No. Oh, internal.
Internal.
So, your, it says shuttle's not coming out on Mountview Road. It's going through there.
The days are coming out on Mountview in the morning and later evening when we have more caddies to transport. But during the day, we're using carts to go and in, out, because it's internal. Now, we pave that road that connects to the fire road that's hit.
All right. Yeah, I think we're good on this. Put it up for a vote, I guess, for the amendment to the final site plan, lighting for the parking lot, I guess. Is there a motion?
I have just to clarify, I have one condition, that the shut-off time be no later than nine PM. And also that all conditions that are not inconsistent in the prior resolution are still in effect.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve amendment to eight dash two thousand fifteen S, Boulter Stroll Golf Course, two oh one, Shunpike Road, block sixteen oh five, block one, for the amended final site plan, as the conditions outlined by our board, attorney for adding lighting up to nine, nine PM.
A second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Mayor Sam Pulis?
Yes.
Sarah Sino?
Yes.
Dr. LaBazo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. That's a good question. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll get it. Yeah, we'll take a two-minute restroom break if anybody needs. We're gonna take two-minute break while you set up. We're gonna take two-minute break while you set up. Yeah.
South of the FedEx Center lot. So that's a snapshot of what's there currently. Now I'm gonna flip to your sheet two, which is the site and utility plan and identifies the proposed improvements. One of the things I should say about this plan is the plan that you're looking at here is identical to the plan that was worked on with your professionals during the summer, fall of 2014, until we developed something that they felt could be supported. That plan, the same one you have before you, then became the subject of a redevelopment ordinance, which my recollection tells me was passed in September of 2015. So this plan is exactly the plan that was the subject of that redevelopment ordinance and that was worked on with your professionals. The only difference here is now we've engineered this, including lighting and drainage and some of the things that were not apparent on the original concept plan approved as part of the redevelopment. So with that in mind, the proposed development is dominated by two proposed buildings that are indicated in the shaded outlines on these drawings. The northernmost building or at the westerlymost building adjacent to Church Mall is about a 6,000 square foot footprint. It's a four-story building, which contains a total of 12 residential units. It is serviced by a driveway, Ingress Egress driveway off Church Mall, a full bi-directional driveway. It is also supported by a total of 31 parking stalls. Twenty-three of them are at grade away from the building. Eight of them are tucked underneath the building footprint itself. Again, we'll stick with Building A here. Apart from the parking in the building, we've also got a dumpster enclosure located for this Building A. You'll notice to the east of that, in the shaded area, that's Building B. That building is about a little over 12,000 square foot footprint, also a four stories, obtaining a total of 24 units. We've got all of the parking associated with Building B is underneath, so it's all drive under parking. The parking that's underneath this building is supplemented by the third component of the improvement, which is the parking lot improvement located south of Black's Lane on this little parcel, Lot 6, Block 2 and 9. So we've got the two buildings, we've got parking associated, directly associated with these buildings, and then we've got the satellite lot located to the south of Black's Lane. I'm gonna flip now to page three, which gives you an idea of what the lighting and landscaping is to be on this property. The lighting for both Building A and the Building B site is all building-mounted lighting. There's no freestanding lighting associated with that. So we've got lighting, canopy lighting, which lights the parking areas directly under the building, and we've supplemented that with a series of building-mounted lights. They're all, all of the lights are between nine and 12 feet tall. They're all downward throw LED lights, so there's no luminaire visible unless you're standing very close to underneath the fixture. The parking lot across the street from Parks, from Black's Lane also features lighting. There's three freestanding lighting poles associated with that. These are mounted at 18 feet tall. They're single head fixtures, again, all downward throw. If you look at Sheet 3, there's a picture of the actual luminaire that's proposed here. So you can see the, how it's downward throw. It's all LED. The beauty about LED lighting is where it's very directional. You don't need house side shields. The old fixtures had drop-down shields, which would preclude light spillage. LED fixtures, it all works within the optics, so they can direct spillage in any way they want. It gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of our lighting design. So for example, the three freestanding lights that are associated with the parking lot, they're such that the optics for these prevent light spillage from behind the light, for the light in the center of the lot, and then for the two lights located on the north and south end of the parking lot, those each have spill control. This one has spill control in the adjacent lot. This one has spill control out into the roadway. So this lighting design complies entirely with the ordinance. I think we've got professional reviews that will indicate that. So that's a bit about the lighting. In terms of landscaping, we're showing seven flowering trees to be planted here. They're dogwoods and Yoshino cherries essentially, and they're sort of located at the perimeters of the property. I'm pointing to them here, seven ornamentals. Those are supplemented by some features adjacent to the building entrances. They are, consist of basically beds of periwinkle, which are delicate purple flowers with the dark evergreen, or not evergreen, but the dark leafy green. And those are also supplemented by azaleas, flowering azaleas. So we've got some ornamental trees, we've got some periwinkle ground covers, we've got some azaleas. We've also got some evergreen boxwoods located along the end of this parking lot to provide some cover from light spillage. We've also got evergreen arborvitae's that ring the two dumpster enclosures that we're proposing, one each located on, adjacent to the building lots. Sheet four gives you an idea of the grading and drainage. In the existing condition, the 1.08 acres contains about 0.2 acres of pervertise coverage. The rest is this small area of woods. The balance of it is grass and lawn. In the proposed developing condition, we're going to be covering that 1.08 acres with about 0.63 acres of additional pervertise coverage. Since we're over the acre of disturbance and we're increasing more than a quarter acre of pervertise coverage, this plan has been designed to comply with the stormwater management rules, which are promulgated by the state and have been adopted by all municipalities. So that design requires that we address three components of the stormwater management rule. One is quantity control, and towards that end, we're required to reduce the discharge rates from the property in the post-development condition relative to the existing condition. That's quantity control. Water quality control, which in this particular case, we'll talk, I'll talk more about that as I get to. So we have quantity, we have quality, and then we have recharge. Quality is obviously dealing with runoff from paved surfaces and requires some sort of treatment for 80% TSS removal before it's discharged into the sewer system. And recharge simply requires that wherever the pre-development permeability or percolation into the ground is, we have to maintain that in the post-development condition. So those three components are what we're charged with when we design stormwater management for a major building. So in terms of the water quantity control, that's being addressed by the construction of two below-grade detention systems. These, so for example, for the one Building A, that's located immediately to the east of the building. It accepts runoff from the building itself, as well as the parking lot. Water quality for this parking lot is provided by a mechanical device. It's basically a filter device that requires swapping out of filters. That water quality unit takes the lower flows from the parking lot, treats them in this, in this filter, and then discharges them into the underground detention basin. This basin then takes the overflows, the collected overflows, and discharges it out at a metered rate down to the existing inlet in Black's Lane, where all of the runoff currently goes. For Building B, the one to the east of Building A, we also have an underground detention system located on the easterly portion of the property. Here, because this is all roof runoff and not exposed pavement runoff, we're not required to provide water quality for this. So there is no water quality associated with Building B. The, again, like with Building A, the roof, all of the roof runoff, in this case, the entire thing is roof, all of the roof runoff is directed to the detention system. There are some inlets located in the parking area. The parking area is not open, so it's not gonna be subject to inundation by rain or any kind of stormwater runoff, but they typically put inlets in the inside of these parking lots for incidental spill off of snow on somebody's car and/or connection from roof leaders associated with the building. So that's how water quality and quantity are being addressed for both Building A and B. Recharge consists of a stone bed beneath both detention systems that are allowed to infiltrate into the ground. That's how recharge is being provided from these two. Lastly, we have the satellite lot to the south. This one, we took a bit of a unique approach because the soil survey for this property indicates you have highly permeable soils, hydrological soil grouping A, which is the most permeable soil classification there is. So we thought we'd take the opportunity to provide a porous pavement situation here. And I don't know if you've seen that in town, we've done a number of them. It's basically, it looks like a popcorn mix. It's a very open graded pavement surface that allows water to infiltrate into it. Beneath the pavement section itself, there is a stone reservoir underneath that provides volume attenuation and then permeability through the soil, which provides the water quality and the recharge. So that's how runoff and stormwater are being addressed for the satellite lot. Those are essentially the main outlines of the development proposal. I have your professionals' letter. I'm also figuring we'll have some question and answers. We have some questions about it. I'd like to go through that with you if I can, before I address any of your professionals' comments.
What other, who else is going to speak here? Just so I know.
The architect.
Okay. Let's go through everything first, if you want, and then...
Sure.
Do you prefer that or not?
I would, I don't want you to do the extra. Do you have reports before we do the architect?
That's fine. If that's with the chairman, that's with the chairman's pleasure.
I guess at the end, I gotta make that decision, right?
Have you used the head with the camera?
That's, that's fine. What, you would like him to address what? I'm sorry.
We were willing to go through the expert reports that we received, so we could adjust those comments, so that at least the board would have the benefit of our position before they ask the questions.
And, and...
That's fine. You have the architect, the architect is to speak also?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we have the architect speak? Then we'll go to our professionals and hear their concerns and...
Okay.
I introduce Rocco Campanella.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give your first and last name for the record.
Rocco Campanella. Last name is C.A.M.P.A.N.E.L.L.A.
Mr. Campanella, by whom are you employed?
I'm partner with, in the firm Architecture Plus in Raritan, New Jersey.
And will you give the board the benefit of your educational background and work experience?
Sure. I'm a graduate of the School of Architecture at NJIT in 1980. I've been in my own practice since 1986. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, and licensed professional planner and certified interior designer. I practice mainly in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, but also practice in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Maryland, and Delaware.
As part of your practice, have you appeared before boards and agencies in the state of New Jersey and testified as an expert in architecture?
Yes, many counties here in, here in Jersey, Union, Somerset, Morris.
Please give the board the names of some of the municipalities where you've been, you appear and have been qualified.
Yeah, sure. Here in Springfield, County Worth, Union, Bridgewater, Downbrook.
It's fine.
Morris Town.
Next.
Yeah, it's fine.
As part of your employment, did you prepare the architecture for this particular project? When we talked about the church mall could be developed?
Yes.
Explain to the board what you did.
The goal is to design to low-rise residential multifamily units. They're both four stories. They both are three floors of residential, two-bedroom units over parking. Building A is, parking is actually open. Building B, the parking is actually closed, so totally enclosed in the building. Again, all the bedrooms, all the residential units are two-bedroom units, and there is four on the, on the smaller buildings per floor. 12 units total. There's eight on the larger building, eight per floor. And essentially, the, they've been designed to, you know, accommodate a two-bedroom requirement. They have, both buildings have the necessary facilities, such as elevators, stairs, janitors' closets, and entries, and common area corridors.
Do you have, as part of the plan, do you expect the buildings to look that look like?
No. The one of the concern was, we were designing in Springfield, adjacent to, you know, historic facilities and present buildings, and we wanted to be sympathetic to that. So we did our best to design within the colonial design parameters, so that we were sympathetic to the adjacent structures.
So you have renderings of what the buildings will look like if the pressure...
We do. We have two renderings. One, we were so concerned about being so close to the church that we wanted to do two renderings, looking at it from both sides. And we have one rendering of the larger building on Black's Lane, which I'll put up.
Why don't you put, mark that A2, since the, A2 with today's date.
Do we have a sticker?
We can provide.
You can't, um, those.
If you can, I don't know. There's stickers available. All right, where am I at? Want that A2, today's date, please? We got...
We don't have those, don't you? Did we have those?
A2, today's date, July 12, 2017.
This is the first view of the swan building right behind the church. And it shows essentially the view down Church Mall. And you can see our project in relationship to the existing facilities. We're using a combination of brick, cementitious siding, composite shrinjos, and in a way that they're hoisted. Sorry about that. And designed in a way that, again, is sympathetic to the colonial design. We've turned the third floor, the, above the parking area, with a dormer design to give the impression of a lower structure, and essentially with dormers and accent points. And one of the things that we were concerned about is how the building looked, not only on the main elevation, but also the other elevation. So we took extra time to make sure that, not just the front elevation, but the other sides were also treated appropriately.
That would be A3. That's the same building, different view?
Yes, this is the same building, different view from the other side of the street.
Is that why building ours?
That's A3.
The Sarah Bailey? Where's Sarah Bailey?
Right next door.
Right next door.
So you can see, actually...
No, it's on that street. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So this is, you can actually see where the entrance to the facility is with the view that fronts the street, the church now on the right side. And again, three stories over the garage and over the parking. This is not really a garage, it's actually, it's an open space where the cars are parked under. The rest of the parking is along the lot. You can see one of the cars is parked there, and there are other cars on the side.
Mr. Campanella, when I look at both one and two, it seems like it's very, very close, if not identical, to the cover of the Church Mall redevelopment plan.
Yes, that's our, that's our rendering.
Okay, so this is a rendering you did, but to use as part of the...
Yeah, that's Exhibit A2.
And so this is what you followed through with the design, the specific design of the property?
We did.
Prepare for Ben. Absolutely.
This is A4?
This is the Black's Lane, larger building. We followed through with the design. We changed the coloration so that the two are compatible, but not identical. We essentially have the entrance to the closed parking garage and the main entrance for the residents. We have used similar materials. They can still have brick, the mensard roof with siding. This elevation is actually more developed than the one that was submitted to the board. We felt that we wanted to embellish this more. It was a larger building, and we took the time to make sure the massing was appropriate, the colors were appropriate, that it didn't look like too large on the site. The building is not large to begin with, but we wanted to make sure that the scale of it related well to the other structures there.
So the difference that is would be the enhancement? The difference would be this, and what the board has as their plan?
Yeah, what we did was, we added more fenestrations to this and added some decorative balconies. They're actually not usable, strictly decorative. We've added two colors in the siding and two different sizes, four to six inch and maybe nine to 10 inch, to give a better sense of scale and create a more interesting facade.
The footprint would be known in the actual size and is too more identical to what's the...
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're similar to what have been submitted. In fact, we reduced the square footage somewhat, a little bit on this one, where we made this indentation go all the way through the second floor.
Can you tell me how the interior of the dam here, there's storage areas?
So the larger building, as you have just seen, in this rendering, has a main entrance with vestibule and a lobby, circulation space through an elevator, elevator equipment room and a stairwell, accessible features for the parking spaces that are under the building, and as well as an entrance and an exit for the cars themselves. A utility stair is tucked in the upper left ear, and then the other emergency egress is on the site of the facility. Once you get upstairs, there's a central core of those facilities, stairs and elevators and janitors closet, connected to corridors that provide the means of egress in case of an emergency, and the units essentially wrap around that core. That's the same concept on the upper levels.
There was a question, and it's one or more of the reports regarding the availability of low-income or...
Yeah, there was, discussed that with our client, and it was our intention to get five of the units on the second floor to be the co-units designated as rental units. The other three would be standard units.
The co-unit would be on the basing, the first occupied floor of the larger building, which would naturally be five units.
That's correct.
And with no alteration in the size of the unit, other than existing, that's what we developed.
Yeah, they're essentially...
The whole modification for co- was internal and has internal, we see.
Yes.
I have no further questions. Do we go to the extra reports?
Okay, this is in the redevelopment plan. We're trying to get a copy of that plan, 'cause I think...
You want to reveal any more?
Love it. Love it if you have it. Yeah, let's, well, do you wanna ask questions, or you prefer? Let's go to our professionals.
Yeah, I have a question to the architect. On the last...
Five-minute break?
...issue that he was speaking about with the affordable units. You said you're gonna be modifying the units on that first occupied floor of the larger building. Does that mean that you have, you have to provide at least one three-bedroom unit? So are you going to make alterations or make one unit three-bedroom?
I don't think that's the requirement. There was a suggestion, this is a project of all three-bedrooms. It's not one three-bedroom in the entire project. So we've seen in our, and that's what basically we're talking about here, we've seen in our that have one three-bedroom for low-income, and all the market needs a two-bedroom.
Well, the problem is, is that the regulations and the ordinance that we have for affordable housing, and that the court has approved, has required us to provide a certain bedroom mix.
As you're aware of what's been going on with the state as of late, I'm sure. We all were in courts, we just finished our court case. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Correct.
There, I apologize. But what Mr. Michaels is saying is correct, and this has happened recently, and we were mandated. I mean, we don't have much of a say in it.
Right, I mean, you know, and, and our implementation of the plan is being monitored by the Fair Share Housing Center, and if we don't comply with those agreements, then the township would be in trouble.
I would call it affordable housing.
I don't know if it's up for debate, if it's something that we do and...
Yeah, and it is in our affordable housing ordinance. The bedroom mix is in the affordable housing ordinance. So I, and, and I had it in my letter...
Yep.
You know, what the requirement was, or the breakdown, and the way that I interpreted it, it looks as though you need one three-bedroom unit, and then...
It would satisfy it, because we will redesign, except one, two of the, two of the departments on the second floor, which is the first, to make one one-bedroom and one three-bedroom.
That would satisfy it. That would satisfy it, if you did that.
How many affordable units will be divided here?
Five. Five. And then the split is, it's usually 50/50 between low and moderate, and if you have an odd number, then you have to have the majority of them, the extra unit is in, is a low unit, low-income unit. And then there's also in the agreement, just to be aware, is that 13%, which would be another unit, one of the low-income units, has to be affordable to the very low income. So you should be aware of that as well.
Okay, that's...
My other, I had, I had a question also for the engineer. The, I had suggested that perhaps additional landscaping, foundation-type plantings would be appropriate on the south side of the buildings. And I, unless I didn't read the plans correctly, it looked as though there wasn't any landscaping in those areas. It's a narrow strip, but perhaps it would...
Let me know if you need, yeah. I'll tell you.
Let me get to the landscape plan. Excellent.
I want to interview the experts first, and the question is, will you...
He runs the meeting, that's why I can't make it clear. All right, so we're talking about... I think Mr. Michaels is referring to the south side of the two structures.
That's correct.
They're only green there. You're right, there's ample opportunities to put foundational planting in there, flowering shrubs. I don't think there's any compunction about doing that.
Those are, those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Disco?
I would actually prefer that Tom go through whatever he, you know, doesn't or can't actually ask. I think it would be easier to... Does he have some care of that?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm gonna drop down, and the ones that I think require testimony. Mike, so I'm, page two, Mike, where you're, the question is, the maximum lot coverage...
Mike, so I'm, page two, Mike, where your, the question is the maximum lot coverage is listed as seventy-seven six. Michael's asking if the impervious, the porous pavement we have is counted towards the impervious coverage and yes, it is, Mike. For zoning purposes, it's counted.
So our ordinance actually would give you a credit against that and it would actually be a lower number.
Okay, terrific. Okay, I, this might be for the architect, but we discussed this. Item eight on the same page. Mike is concerned about the elevations matching the site plan. I mean, obviously my site plan is going to match the architectural elevations. If there's anything that's different, I think there's, one thing we noticed was the stairwell out here at the side of the building was slightly different. I don't know what other issues you found.
The only real issue was on the architectural elevation. It's a mirror view.
Yeah.
It's reversed.
Right.
And, but that's not the principal point. The principal point was it appears to be open, maybe you can go to that architectural sheet and you can see it would be visible or open to the underground parking, which is in your redevelopment plan. So I think they need to speak to that point.
So let me explain what he's actually, in the area he's talking about. This parking that sits underneath building number A, letter A, there is two wing walls that come out to form the barrier of that. These are not, these have cutouts in them so that you can view through there. I think that's what Michael was talking about. So maybe we want to show them on your elevation what we've got.
And I'm not making a position that that's better or worse, but your plan says something.
The difference is that the picture on the outside of the plan is identical to what this plan is, that has a cutout, then the writing inside says, don't do the cutout.
Exactly, that's the point.
And so it's a board option, we'll do either one.
Right.
In other words, they don't want the parking under the building to be visible. There's a cutout in that, I want to say exterior wall, although it's not a wall supporting...
So this is what we're talking about, just so you guys have a visual. So we're driving by Church Mall Street, we're looking in at building A. This is the area Michael's talking about. The parking is under here and I think the redevelopment ordinance does say you should screen it with building materials similar to the architectural drawing. This was left open, I think, for aesthetic reasons. This can easily be, if the board's pleasure is aesthetically this doesn't fly, this will be closed off so that there's not the clear view shed in. But that's the issue that Michael is raising, that you can see through that to the car parking, whereas the, I think the redevelopment ordinance kind of contemplates, you can't see through there.
Anything else, Mike?
I mean, I'll let, the architect may come back and revisit that, but that's the, that's the decision.
Pointing it out for the board really. It's a preference. It's a preference.
It should be, we could pull the board.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's going to change the...
We'll do that later. There's other issues that we need to go about. That's my...
All right, so I'll quickly through Mike's next question, I think it's been addressed. He had an issue about the easement. I'll point that out just so that you guys are clear on it.
But you took that down.
Yep. He was talking about the satellite lot down here where there appears to be a curb, which actually the curb does overhang the existing property line. This is the area where there's been a three-foot parking setback easement required so that we actually fit within easement. I have no idea why that easement was generated, but it exists and we're utilizing it. So we're not encroaching on the adjacent property, just so that everyone is aware.
That's easement that was, the documentation that was presented tonight...
That's correct, Michael, yes.
Send them a copy, can you?
So moving along quickly, Michael's number eleven, he's asking for a stop sign here. I have no problem with that. He's also requesting that since this is not a ninety-degree driveway here, he's requesting that we add some signage to augment the no right turns coming out of here, that you can only make a left. And I don't have any problem with that. He's asked if the applicant will indicate if the parking will be assigned to specific units and I can answer, yes, it will be. All of the parking on site will be allotted to a unit. Michael also on item fourteen indicates that opportunities exist to enhance the amount and density of landscaping, which I've already agreed that we will do. I've discussed lighting number fifteen, I think, with regard to shielding, unless Mike has comments about that, I think I've handled that. Questions about it on the last sanitary sewer, I have no issue with that.
So, hold on. So that one there is, because this is a big issue in our town.
Sixteen?
Yeah, sixteen and all the way down. Well, sixteen and twenty down. But sixteen with the RVSA, obviously there's going to, so what is, what was your concern right here, if I'm reading this right?
Well, the point is, we're going to be generating more sanitary sewer flow than currently is generated from the site. We've done a downstream test to confirm that they can handle this and taking into account that there is another affordable, another development coming in very close by at the next meeting too. Existing sanitary sewer capacity should be analyzed. I'm asking for that.
Yeah, that's very important and also, so yeah, that's going to add to, Sam, how's this impact our, I mean, have we looked at anything there? Is there a concern?
RBSA? It will not have an impact because we have the capacity. We do have the capacity. We have arranged on that, you know, that's going to happen.
Yeah, and I don't know where you are on that. We're working, we were working on that before, right?
We do have the capacity. We have a two-point-four MGD and our capacity is...
All right, and as far as the sewer lines in that area, like Mr. Tiger just brought up, that, I mean, that's something that will be, that has to be done for sure.
I think we're asking for that.
Okay, all right.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, Mike, but I, usually the towns have a sense for what connections are there so I can generate the sanitary flow.
And we can tell you that in a sense that it's a problem, that area, that your area there is near some major flooding issues and the sewer lines there do, that lead to Mars Avenue have given us some problems in the past. So definitely, and as was mentioned, we have another major redevelopment of one hundred and fifty units that's going to probably connect to the same line if we're not mistaken.
And there's a twenty-four-ish...
Yeah, twenty-four, so that, and we're asking, we didn't just pick you, we're asking everyone to come up with something to make sure that that can be handled because that does impact the residents and we're going to be watching that.
Oh yeah, I have no problem with that. It makes good sense. I am a little puzzled that a redevelopment plan can get this far with this kind of infrastructure.
So am I.
And not, and that didn't come up before because I remember asking about that early on, if capacity existed, everybody said yes.
Yeah, but if they're going to do a study...
We're happy to do a study.
Yeah, but that, and then you're talking about how long ago too? This was two thousand and fifteen it was back?
The plan was developed late two thousand and fourteen and then you're, by the time your redevelopment orders came back, it was September of two thousand and fifteen.
And the redevelopment zone itself was even much further back. So, I'm sorry.
Okay, anyway, I, we have no problem with that.
I think the board's within a right also to ask them to mitigate the increased sanitary. They can do that by doing I and I.
I would definitely, I would definitely ask for that.
So, okay, what I'm saying is when we do a study and if you're going to go mitigation necessary, but it should include, we should give you a maximum amount of number to use because if you're doing a study for thirty-five or thirty-six and the other ones with twenty, you're not doing it as inclusive what that line is going to handle, especially this one and the other development that's going to come next month because they're both are in right in the same area. The hundred and something that's across the street, that may be a different line. I don't know, Sam, I don't know the spider webs on the ground per se that you do, but I'm just saying these two are going to be right next to each other, very close.
The one thing I can say about the sanitary connection, and Mike will be interested in this, is that we will be below eight thousand gallons per day net increase. So we won't need a treatments work application. We won't need a sewer extension or anything like that. So we'll be dealing locally and not with the state.
But there will be more sanitary sewer flow.
Definitely. Okay, so that was sixteen. I have no problem with seventeen incorporating the detail. Eighteen, no comment. Nineteen, all proposed permits are pending right now. This is the first one we've pursued. We haven't pursued any others at this time. Stormwater, I have no problem with twenty. Twenty-one, Michael's asking for the latest DEP certification for the water quality unit, which I'll gladly provide for him, that's no problem.
Because many have expired in the...
Yes, December, a lot of them expired December. So I have no problem with that, Mike, we'll get that through. Twenty-two, non-structural. This is, this is a bit of a challenging one because non-structural methods, if you guys have heard this testimony before, non-structural methods are really what you don't do to the site as opposed to what you do to the site. It's very challenging to point to a number of non-structural techniques for a redevelopment zone that allows ninety percent impervious coverage. It's very difficult to do that. But what I will tell you is that in terms of non-structural, there are a couple of items I think that we can count on. One is that we are limiting the impervious cover. The zone allows ninety percent. We were at seventy-seven with this porous pavement. So if we eliminate the porous pavement or count it as non-impervious, we're well below what the maximum impervious coverage is permitted in the zone. So that's a non-structural technique. Second structural, non-structural technique I would highlight would be the use of native landscaping that doesn't require irrigation. That's another non-structural technique. And third, the third non-structural, I can see the chairman is tossing his eye.
That one I don't love, but...
Well, I'm just telling you, these are, these are the state's, and I have the book, I can read it to you if you like.
No, no, I believe you.
And the third one would be source prevention, which is actually meant to convey that whatever storm sewer conveyance, the inlets are fitted with the eco-friendly heads, they prevent trash from filing down the storm sewer and incoming the storm sewer. That would be the third non-structural technique that I would suggest we can comply with with regard to the stormwater management.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I think first of all, it has to be put in writing as part of the plan, which it hasn't been done yet. Second, I think that there are, there's a, there's a numerous guidelines as to what some of the non-structural, and they, they're supposed to actually go through them and incorporate as many as possible. So I think they have to do that stuff. There may be some, you know, in the grass areas where you have area drains, there may be some other things they might have to do to enhance that. They can do things and I think they have to, in order to meet the intent of the stormwater rules, you've got to do that.
Would you be willing to work with the board engineer to his satisfaction?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I think they can get there, but the...
The way the regulations...
That is a very important issue here. I mean, obviously for this board, they know, we go through this all the time. In certain areas of town, it's more important than others. This happens to be one of those more important than others.
I will say, and I do this a lot, we do a lot of stormwater management, I deal with a lot of major developments and I will say that we will work with Michael on this. I have no problem attempting, but the regulation does say incorporate non-structural strategies as practical.
Yes.
It doesn't say you must adhere to each one of these, but Michael's right, you must address each one of them, say why it's not practical or is practical.
You've got to go through the list and say, basically say why you can't.
Okay, so then that has to be done.
I mean, it is for the record, they are reducing the runoff. So nobody's going to say here that we're increasing runoff off-site, that's not happening. They're mandated to reduce those runoff rates by certain percentages for the various flow rates. So they're doing that and they are providing the water quality. It's just for the full intent of the stormwater rules, they've got a little bit more to go and they've got to put it in writing and then they've got to do the maintenance requirements.
And actually, Michael, the maintenance manual was, the first time we submitted plans, that was submitted. I don't know why you didn't get a copy of it, but...
Yeah, it may have been.
We'll resubmit that to you, that's no problem. Okay, that takes care of that. Twenty-three, storm drainage conveyance, I have no problem providing that. Twenty-four is interesting. Michael misses a point that there must be some ponding associated or nearby our connection inlet, which is out in Black's Lane. So this is the only inlet, this one right here is the only inlet in the area that takes that?
Opposite that, I don't know why, when I was there Friday, there's water sitting across the street. There's no catch basin across the street. I assume it's designed to cross grade against, across the pavement to the basin.
Yeah.
To get there.
Based on the spot grades, there's no crown, it's, it goes, it looks like it flows across based on the spots.
So I would suggest that, you know, if they're doing this project, we try to correct that. It would, it would be easy to do it either through repaving it or adding an inlet over there and height and across the street.
You don't have any problem with that, right? Okay, I don't think we have any problem with that, Mike. Maintenance manual, we'll resubmit and we will have to do some soils testing out here just mostly to make sure that the county soil survey designation of A is accurate and that we don't have groundwater issues. Again, based on the soil survey, we don't anticipate any of those, but formally we'll have to make sure that we confirm the assumptions in the soil survey.
Right, and that's post-construction too. You have to document that permeability is actually going to happen. Based upon what Tom is saying, it should happen, but you have to document it.
And that's all I have with regard to Michael's letter, unless there's something else he feels he wants to discuss further.
Okay, that's it, Mike, I'm sorry. All right, some questions I'm sure up here.
You start with that. Any questions that you, who can come back if you have any problem?
We're going over here.
Mr. Chairman, I want, just one other question.
Go ahead.
I missed about, I asked whether any generators are being proposed.
At the current time, no, they're not proposing any generators.
And there would be no height violation from anything mounted, correct?
Correct.
That would be...
All right. I have a number of concerns about the plan and it starts with traffic and circulation. Do you have a traffic engineer expert that's going to testify on behalf of this application?
I hadn't contemplated one. It's an application that's consistent with the plan. This is the thirty-two units and the number of parking places are what are contained in the church mall redevelopment plan. Has the permitted use?
Well, notwithstanding the fact that there is a redevelopment plan and certain things are spelled out, for items not addressed in the redevelopment plan, the zoning ordinance of the township of Springfield is applicable and the safety of the residents of Springfield and in my mind, the circulation associated with these developments is paramount and I think we're going to need to hear from an expert on circulation. You're putting, you're thirty-six apartments, half of which, or some number of which, are dumping cars into a parking lot. It's called Academy Green, but it's really a parking lot. And so I'm not comfortable with the, I'm not comfortable with that aspect of the plan and that's just one of my concerns. And again, I know you have this redevelopment plan and I know you're trying to design to the redevelopment plan, but there are a number of areas that are not spelled out in the development plan and I think we have to just go to what is smart and what makes sense. And I'm talking about pedestrian access, traffic and circulation, the need for any off-tract improvements, snow removal, how you're going to handle snow removal in that little parking lot. Where are you going to put the snow? I mean, this is, if you look at the, I'm just telling you, we're going to, I'm going to need to hear from a traffic consultant.
I understand that. We'll provide the traffic consultant, who I assume is satisfied, they're requesting everybody in traffic. That's the request that we provide.
The engineer spoke about cleaning filters in the stormwater management system. Who's going to do that and on what basis?
This is an owned project. The owner is going to continue owning. This is a meeting soul, it's not going to be, there's one person who's owning the entire project. So as the owner of the building, and there's a maintenance plan that's being...
Well, what happens if those folk, like, that's a good point and I wrote that down too. Those filters, if they aren't changed, what happens? I mean, what happens? What could potentially happen there?
Nothing, they bypass the water quality unit so you're not getting the eighty percent use as one. These, usually for residential uses, these need to be changed there for you to...
The maintenance manual for the stormwater element must be incorporated. This is going to be some sort of association, I guess?
No.
No? It's going to have to, it's going to have to be in the deed of, in some manner so that...
Master deed?
Yeah, so that...
There's no master deed.
Property couldn't be transferred without the knowledge of the maintenance required for the stormwater system.
Can I ask a question too? There's a town owns a property adjacent to where this is.
Yeah.
And at one point it was discussed about perhaps being part of this project. Has that been discussed recently or where are you on that?
I will, I will answer it. At one point at our initial meeting was the discussion about that property being available for purchase. About a month later, I received a telephone call at my office who said, sorry, the town has decided it's not available. Do not...
How long ago was that meeting?
We're talking about four months.
Four months ago?
When we started this project, I think was May, or just before May, we met here and the meeting, this was done during the term of this... And the meeting, this was done during the term of this project.
Okay, hold on, one second. Because this project is really, when you go from its genesis, is many years ago that it was started. So there's been, let, hold on, you're waving your hands, hold on. And last year, when I was on the committee, there was discussions among the committee members and the people who involved at the, I don't know if it's the same people or not.
It's not.
Okay, so the original people that were in the project as of last year, there was discussion about using that property owned by the town as part of the development.
Right.
Because it is in the redevelopment zone. And so I don't, my question to you is, when was that meeting exactly? With who? That's my question. When was that meeting done that decided the town was not?
When we started, which was probably April, I mean, I don't have the exact date because I haven't got that part of the file with me. We met with the township administrator at the time. We met with Sam, who's the engineer. We met with the attorney for the redevelopment, my client and I. And there might have been other people there, but those are the five I specifically recollect. And that issue, one of the issues was discussed was the inclusion of that piece of property. And the question was put in, if you want us to consider that, one, we have to know how much we have to pay for it, when, how available it is. And if in fact that's the case, we're willing to consider purchasing it and do the whole thing.
Well, my feeling is that I don't think the township committee was aware of it. So I think the mayor, being here, who hadn't heard about that, perhaps should bring that up at the next township committee meeting and see if there's. There may still be interest if you want.
Well, I, at three or four weeks later, before the design started, the answer was given, "Do not consider that, it is not for sale." And therefore, we went forward with this project.
From who?
From the BA, I guess, right.
Excuse me?
Who, from who? She's the mayor's.
I don't remember who in that call.
Was it a phone call or an email?
It was a phone call.
That's the mayor there, so you can.
I believe it was the township administrator who I was speaking to, who called. That's my recollection, without checking the file.
Because I'll tell you, I'll be very frank and honest with you. I mean, this has been in front of us since two thousand, I don't even know. I know that was voted on two thousand and fifteen, as far as the redevelopment plan and so on. And there are concerns on this plan, they're always happening. But anyway.
Well, I'd like to just finish my, my comments about traffic and circulation. Black's Lane is a, is a one-way street and it's a substandard street, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't know what the appropriate width should be. It's got an apartment building right at the corner of Morris Avenue and, and, and Black's Lane. It's got Spring Mill Manor, which dumps, I don't know how many cars onto it. And you're proposing another, at least twenty-four plus fifteen spaces you have that are now dumping cars, traffic, onto what I view as a substandard road, which then goes into a parking lot. So I am really concerned about the safety of pedestrians, the people that use Sarah Bailey.
In the future.
I mean.
Just, just to be clear though, the law, the permitted use, the law only allows the consideration of safe ingress and egress and safe intrasite circulation. So, and I can quote you from one of the most important cases on the issue, which says, quote, "The authority to prohibit or limit uses generating traffic into congested streets, already congested streets or streets with high rates of accidents is an exercise of the zoning power solely vested in municipal governing body." So it's the governing body which determines whether or not the local street's going to handle the traffic. Now, what the board can ask for is proof that you can safely get into and out of the site and circulate the site. So we need to, you need to be careful not to ask for a traffic study that we don't have power to ask for.
No, I, we can ask for whatever we want. Whether it's legal or not legal is another question. And so I appreciate the clarification.
I would advise you to.
So, so the township committee.
It's the governing body's decision.
I think a traffic study needs to be performed, whether the road width of Black's Lane can handle the additional amount of traffic. You can shake your head all you want.
That's not part of what you're, I don't think.
What we can do is ask the township committee to do that study.
Consistent with what the law requires us to do. We will bring our expert here, he'll tell you what he can and can't do. But just so we understand it, this board doesn't have the power to determine that the governing body can't say.
You're really not helping.
Well, the point is, this board has the purview of site plan approval. We, can we not exercise our authority to ask for questions related to the safety of the residents of Springfield?
Within the parameters of your power, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, how does a, a parking lot become a through-street safely? I mean.
And that would be ingress and egress, so that, that's a legitimate question to ask. So, but the questions that should not be asked are, is it too much traffic? That's the type of thing.
But we can ask the township committee, we can send a letter of recommendation to the township committee.
It's, they're vested already as having filed a complete application.
Has the fire department reviewed? Has this been sent to the fire department? Has, did they come up with anything yet? Okay, we need, we would like, Mr. Chair, if we can direct the board secretary to make sure that the fire department provides us with a letter of their ability that fire trucks can go in and out and with the circulation as well.
They, they received the application and they don't respond.
Okay, but in this, but in this case, we want some.
You can request that the applicant's engineering and/or traffic engineer, civil or traffic engineer, show that the safe circulation on the site includes safe circulation for emergency vehicles. So they can request a turning radii from the fire department, which vehicles they use, maximum size, and show that on the plan, which I'm sure they'd be willing to do.
Let me continue with my question. Build, the bigger building, how many units are in the bigger building?
Twenty-four total.
How many parking are in that?
Two per.
I know it's supposed to be two per, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question, because the way the.
The proportions is what I'm trying to understand.
No, that's a good question. So here we have a total of twelve units.
Yes.
We've got thirty-one parking stalls, so we've got seven extra. Here, we've got twenty-four units requiring forty-eight stalls. We have twenty-six underneath here. We have another fifteen over here for forty-one. And then seven of these, we have a walkway, these properties are interconnected. We have a walkway that accesses seven spots here. So that's how forty-eight per building B would be a portion. A has all of the parking on its site. B shares some of the parking with A and utilizes the satellite.
So for the single owner, as you were describing, is there going to be some sort of who parks where, or is it just every?
No, as indicated by the engineer, this is going to be designated parking. Each unit will have designated parking spaces allocated to that.
And how does the parking change with the affordable housing? There's going to be three-bedroom? It's all.
Goes from two-point, two-point-one.
It should even out.
Okay.
And the lower one-bedroom needs to compensate for it.
I got you.
Is there, I'll defer to our engineers. Is there adequate lighting between the two buildings in order for people to walk? If they're going to be, if you're going to have that shared parking?
Yes, that's a good question, and I will show you the way. So yes, we have, the building mounted lights are used, are associated with the drive, the walk through here, there's another at the entrance of the garage. And then at each door egress, we have a building mounted light. So the one you're talking about, the connection to the back sidewalk that runs between the stairwell and parking lot, Jason threw it, there's a light.
There's plenty of foot candles and beads on.
Plenty.
Are these lots going to be merged into one lot, or are they going to be?
All but six.
All but six.
Six on, six on nine, because it's every way.
The other side flags.
Yeah, the other, all the three lots that are contiguous to each other are going to be merged into one lot. The one lot that is across the street is going to be merged. Of course, it's separated by a public street.
What prohibitions could stop someone from parking in a, I mean, onsite, very easy to control, but this other area where it's not merged, and you have, I think you said fifteen?
Correct.
Fifteen? How do you stop me just parking there?
Signing.
Is it, is there Title Thirty-nine that gives the ability to ticket? Like, what's the?
Well, that's private bus, and we'd have to authorize the police to have jurisdiction over that park lot. It wouldn't just don't happen.
I mean, I'm just, you know, you've got to figure that if people, it's a, it's a transit area. I mean, people are going to, I'm sure there'll be kidneys and stuff that the mayor and governing body will figure out over time. You know, how do you make sure that no one parks there and you're able to have the added parking?
Sure, signing it, we would have to authorize, we have to give the police title line, title, cleared out jurisdiction to that park.
You could also have. You could also privately tow.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they could, yeah, but the sign, you could privately tow.
I'd like to ask our council, how do we prevent the future sale of this individual lot? This parking lot?
Well, you can put a prohibition against, well, you can require that.
They need to restrict it.
And also, right, and also as, as part of the redevelopment plan, I don't think it was understood that the lot should be separated. So I think that's a reasonable restriction to place on it. Separated, into separate ownership. Right. It would also drop it below the track size.
I have one last question, and this, you've already asked.
Put them on.
How are we dealing with snow removal on this?
I can't tell you, I'm not a plumber. This happens a lot on these developments, particularly ones that are in more rare areas.
There's no room to put it to snow.
They come with a loader, and they haul it out if they want. Or they, you're right, there's very little room. There's room along the front of the building, there's room in the island, there's very little room to stack snow. That's frankly going to be the property owner's headache. There is no, we do this all the time, there's no board requirement for making sure you have a snow removal plan. Everybody wants to have one so it doesn't encumber residents or the adjacent residents. I can't tell you what the snow's going to go right at, because I'm not the snow holder contractor. So the owner will have to make some provision to make sure snow doesn't encumber his lot, and obviously, just.
How are you going to provide for safe access from this individual lot, parking lot across Black's Lane?
Which one are you talking about now?
From the.
Building B?
Yeah, from the fifteen lot, fifteen parking spaces across the street.
So the question is, how do I provide safe access?
Safe, yes, safe crossing.
Passage. I mean, they, I'm not sure what the question is. They, you want them to go from here to here? They can't obviously go this way, this is a one-way, so this is going.
Well, let me ask a more basic question. How are people getting from this parking lot to the building?
Oh, how are the pedestrians walking?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're going to walk through the, either the drive walking into the garage, or there's a sidewalk right on the other side of Black Lane, or side of the.
Is there any proposed signage for the cars to put people on, like crosswalks or something?
Well, we could do that too. It's a, whatever you think is appropriate. This is a low-traffic road currently right now, and it's one-way. So pedestrians have one way to look. I have no problem having a crosswalk in a pedestrian walk, if you like.
I don't know, I'm, I'm going to defer to you.
It's like any other road, but I think if you've asked for a traffic study, that's part of what can be incorporated in that, that goes directly to safety.
Let's have that.
Okay, so we're going to have that, we're not going to, we're, well, I've got the public here, I guess.
Right, so you should open it up to the public for questions.
You have any more? We're going to have to come back anyways. Anyone from the public, care to speak? Come on up.
This is just, just questions for these witnesses, there'll be a chance for.
Just to be clear, yeah, I'm sorry. Just to be clear, we're not voting on this tonight. So this is not done until we get some more information. But you're here now, so we want to hear it from you just in case. But just to let you know for the public's information.
William Stinkowitz, twenty-one Walnut Court. S.I.N.K.O.W.I.T.Z. Twenty-one Walnut Court, Springfield. Been there for thirty-seven years, in the right approach from where you guys are building. It's not a low-traffic area. I mean, Black's Lane, there's no sidewalks. It's a one-way. And there's a new apartment building within the last five or six years. People come out, come on Academy Green, which is a parking lot for my church. Come out to Church Mall and meet all the people that are dropping their kids off at Montessori School. And now we go to Morris Avenue, which the Department of Transportation just put, I think, at seventy-six new lights. Three cars make it out from that light. So now you're going to have thirty-six or something apartments where these fellows want to build. Fine, it's an ugly dump anyway. And on a corner of Morris Avenue, you're going to have twenty-four. That's sixty, sixty. There's going to be sixty cars. I don't care how you look at it, it's going to be sixty cars. Now, they can't go out Walnut Court, which is my street. They own that, they're going to, new owners are building just like these fellows. The only thing to go out Church Mall. How do you get all this traffic out of that street? Plus, the people that live out Walnut Court, they're going to change my street and make me allow another. So that's, that's how I feel about that. Far as knocking it all down, everything? Yeah. Be greater. Yeah, nice, but there's a lot that goes through it. Years ago was not a busy street. It's extremely busy street. And when you come out Black's Lane, lane to the right is the Methodist Church, owns that land. Everybody thinks it's part of Academy Green. Now, and there's a law that you have to put up a barrier for a week or something, and then you still maintain it or something, something like that, I'm not sure. But that's how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you.
How do you do, Michael Tarantula, one ninety, Morris. T.A.R.A.N.T.U.L.A. Tarantula, like tarantula. That's the name they gave us. Huh? One ninety, Morris Ave, Springfield Manor. That street, Black's Lane, I agree with the gentleman, I concur. That is a very high-traffic area. And the worst thing is that it's a one-way. We have, I've almost had, I've lived there four years, probably have almost had twenty incidents easily of people coming out of CBS. The curb cut is where they're not supposed to enter. Nobody cares. They come out, one-way, not happening. They're coming out. Many, twenty-eight units, Springfield Manor. Many people have complained to the police department about it. They're unable to enforce it. Also, at the far end, when you come through the church lot, people are constantly, it says, "Do not enter, do not enter." Not happening. People are constantly coming down to cut into Spring Mill Manor and into Springfield Manor, cut through, as well as coming off Morris Ave, cut through our lot. So it's a lot of traffic. That's kind of the forgotten area, Springfield, but traffic's a mess over there, so. The regulations, nothing to be in doubt of, especially CBS, they're coming out of there all the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Melissa Francis. I'm a resident of Union, two ninety-seven Colonial Avenue in Union, but I'm a member of the United Methodist Church at Rorde Church Mall. I just want to make a point that you look into Academy Lane. Part of that is owned by us, that property, so that parking lot. So if you can take a look at that, because that is a concern. And since CBS has been built, I would like to agree with the gentleman who just spoke, the traffic has increased since then. So I would definitely recommend, if that is possible, to have the traffic looked at in that as well.
Good, thank you very much, thank you for your. Anyone else in the public?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment about Black's Lane. I know it's for.
Speaking to the microphone there, so everybody. It's being, yeah.
I spoke at some point, Sam Mardini. I spoke at some point with Tom about the possibility of maybe making Black's Lane two-way street. And I'm not against it or for it, I'm just saying, look into it and see if there's any benefits of making that road two-way roadway. Currently, the pavement width is only eighteen feet, and that's why it's only one-way. I made a recommendation or a suggestion of how to make it a two-way roadway by acquiring a portion of the CBS property and a portion of. a portion of the CBS property and a portion of the applicant's property to widen the right-of-way enough to provide twenty-six-foot pavement, which would make the roadway two-way street. But I, you know, we haven't studied to see the positive or negative impact of that. Maybe there is a good reason to make it a two-way, and may, it may help with traffic. But I, I would like the applicant engineer to look further into it.
Okay. And that's fine, because also, let's not forget that CBS is in there. That TD Bank is closed now. But if something else goes in there, or anything else, that's the only way out, is through that way as well. That's gonna increase, and we don't know what can go in there. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I can respond to that now, if you like, because I was out there, Sam and I had this discussion, and I was out there today, looking at it, out there previously. And I observed many challenges associated with trying to do it. Sam's talking about getting some right-of-way from the CBS property. We can get right-of-way on the east side of Black's Lane, and then he's looking to get right-of-way on the west side of Black's Lane, close to our property, in order to make effectively eight-foot roadway, because we have eighteen feet there now. If you look at CBS property, where you want to take eight feet, that's on a three-to-one slope right there. The drive-out window will be within two or three feet of the eventual roadway. And you've also got utility poles on that entire side of the street. So you have numerous challenges associated with not maintaining the right-of-way here with CBS, but actually implementing road construction because of the physical limitations.
Well, the, you're talking about because of the poles?
I'm talking about the poles. I'm talking about the slope. Talking about the location of the drive-through window, which approaches very close, not too far away, maybe fifteen feet on the pavement.
Is that right?
I think a further discussion would...
Okay, well, I just wanted to make you my...
Those are some good points, but between the two of you guys, you can kind of come to that agreement together, so that it helps us, the board, say, probably not gonna happen.
No, but I want the board to hear the challenges. That's one. The other is, if you wanna take, we wanna increase this road width eight feet in front of our property. We currently comply with the redevelopment doors, because we usually make two-foot setback. That's gone. So not only will the building be too close, we're not complying with the redevelopment doors, but the throat of this driveway, which is now about twenty feet on the short side, so it allows a car to fully pull in before it gets through the door. If I move this eight feet over, I'm not gonna have that throat. That car is actually not gonna be fully straight before he pulls into the driveway door. So there's challenges associated with widening the road, as Sam proposed, for you the property.
But if you reach out with, and discuss, like our chairman said, potentially with that other parking lot or that other piece of land, maybe that can help into this thing. I mean, we're not, we're not obviously gonna get through this tonight, but at least that gives you some other options to look things through, so you can get a complete picture.
All right. I, I say we carry this application. Take a look at it in September, and, and come in front of us when we can vote on it. Is there a motion to...
When's our September meeting?
September, what?
Make an accurate motion. That'll give you time to do a traffic study and work everything out with our engineers.
So, should, should we be, are we, have we been clear enough on what we want the applicant to provide to us? Or should we provide, or should we ask the applicant to pay for our own traffic expert to look at this? Set up an escrow?
Again, I don't think it makes sense, as long as, first, you should take a look at their traffic study and see if it's satisfactory. The traffic study should focus on whether or not conditions allow for safe ingress and egress, safe circulation throughout the site, whether the, one thing that can be looked at is where the amount of traffic backs up the roads sufficiently that it inhibits safe ingress and egress. You know, there, or the amount of traffic makes it so that you cannot get out at certain times or enter. You know, I think before the board calls for its own traffic expert, we should take a look at the quality of their traffic report and the testimony given by their traffic expert.
You all right with that? I guess so. I mean, maybe they work with Mr. Disco to pick someone that's been before the board, and we've heard before...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Knows, knows like what, what the board's been looking for, you know, like Ray.
Yeah, I would like that.
Or, you know, maybe that's something you guys can do. Obviously, we can't obligate you to pick who it is, but at least consult and see if you can work with someone. That may mitigate the potential of having to do a second. Is that acceptable to you guys?
Yeah.
September sixth, please.
September sixth.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to carry this application with no further additional notice to our September sixth meeting at seven P M. in this very same room with no further notice.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Extension?
So no further notice. Do you wanna reiterate that?
Right, so if anyone here is, wants to come back, it'll be September sixth, you're not gonna get any further notice in the mail. So be back here on September sixth at the same time.
Okay. Everybody clear with that? You're not getting any notice, but put it in your calendar. All right. Okay. Set. A motion to adjourn? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?